The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Town Council's special meeting. This is regarding our upcoming proposed budget. I'll ask if you would all stand for the pledge and Councilwoman Thompson will lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll just a couple of comments before we begin. Robert Lee is going to begin his presentation followed by our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Brummett. I would like to thank the Town Manager and his staff for all the work that has been put into producing this document as well as the Board of Education, all the hard work that you folks have also done. It's much appreciated. We know how many hours go into this and now it's the turn of the council to have our fun with it. So, thank you to all of you for everything that you've done. Just a couple of informational items before we begin. Tonight, we're going to have a first look at the budget for the next fiscal year. Next Thursday, March 9th, we will be having a public hearing on the budget and the Town Council will begin their work sessions the week of March 13th. They will be in this room at 6:30 PM. They will be Monday through Thursday. We have work sessions scheduled for the following week as well and there are a few more after that if we need them. We encourage everybody to either come if you're so inclined and listen to our discussions. They will be filmed, I believe, so that the public will have a chance to listen to how we're approaching some of these things. It is undeniable that this is going to be an extraordinary year for every city and town in Connecticut to create a budget for the next few years. The obligations the state has passed on to every city and town were unexpected and they are certainly very large when it compares to our total budget request. The Town Council, I know, is going to do their very best to look at everything that we can. We will take our time to deliberate. You will be asking questions and we will be doing everything we can to produce the best fiscal plan for the Town of Plainville for next year. Unfortunately, we will not know what the final budget from the State of Connecticut will be until after we probably vote on ours at the end of April. At this point, we are compelled to use the Governor's suggested budget, which is again passing on substantial increases that we are obligated to pay for. So, it will be interesting. We will do our best. We will be asking questions and we will be communicating regularly with our representatives in Hartford for updates as to what they see happening. So, with that, I'd like to introduce Robert Lee, our Town Manager. He will present the Town side of the budget first, followed by Superintendent Maureen Brummett.
Thank you very much. According to the Town Charter, the Town Manager is required to present a budget, a recommended budget, to the Town Council at the beginning of March and that's the purpose of this evening's meeting. We have, I'd like to start with some introductory remarks, followed by a summary of the budget, recommended budget, with some detail with respect to the general government budget. Then I will turn the microphone over to Dr. Brummett, who will detail the recommended Board of Education budget and then we'll come back and review the debt service, capital improvement, and finally, calculation of the mill rate. All the information that we're going to speak to this evening has already been put up on the Town website this afternoon, so that includes the handouts as well as the PowerPoint presentation. So, if anybody wants to go online right now and check it out, I know that it's online as we speak. So, I'd like to begin by saying that we are here this evening to present the proposed fiscal year '18 budget to the Town Council. This is a particularly challenging year due to the uncertainties that are occurring at the state level. The Governor has proposed for the first time ever that the municipalities begin contributing to the teachers' pension system. He is proposing to extract $400 million from the 169 cities and towns to fund the teachers' retirement, to fund a portion of the teachers' retirement system that has been underfunded and, in my opinion, mismanaged for many years. The record shows that even during the good years, when the revenues greatly exceeded expenditures, the Governor and the legislature continued to ignore the actuaries' recommendations. As a result, the time has come when the can can no longer be kicked down the road. If approved by the state legislature, the potential impact of Plainville would be significant. Because there is uncertainty with respect to whether this proposal will be approved, I am not recommending that it be included as part of the budget being recommended this evening. However, I will point out what the potential impact could be so that everyone knows what is at stake if the municipalities are required to contribute to the teachers' pension fund as recommended by Governor Malloy. With that in mind, I'd like to proceed by stating that the total proposed budget being recommended this evening totals $58,500,000, which is an increase of $857,000 or 1.49%. At the lower end, it would show that if we, if the Town was required to contribute to the teachers' retirement system as proposed by the Governor, that budget would increase by almost, increased to about $60,400,000, which would be an increase of about $1.9 million above what is being proposed this evening, which would bring the percentage increase up to 4.83%. So, you can see right out of the gate what the, what the potential impact would be if the towns were required to contribute to the teachers' retirement fund as proposed by Governor Malloy. This is our standard pie chart, which gives you an idea of how the budget breaks down. In this particular pie chart, I did use the larger numbers so that you could see the impact of the teachers' retirement as a slice of the entire pie and that represents a little bit over 3% of the total budget. Board of Education is in the 58%, 59% range, you know, Town Government is in the 28% range and then you see Capital and the debt service slices as well. We generally break down our budget into four main categories and I've added a fifth category at the bottom of separating that, calling it the State Teachers Retirement. But the Board of Education's operating budget as recommended would increase the budget by $678,732. Excuse me. It's actually, it's actually turned around a little bit. Yeah, the Town, the Board operating budget would represent a 1.95% increase and it's an increase of $678,000. It's the 1% is on the general government side, or $178,999. So, it just flipped the percent change and we'll make that correction now that I see it. Debt service is not proposed to increase for next year and capital projects, at least the contribution from the general government is not supposed to increase, is not being recommended to increase at all as far as what would be funded through the general fund. So, in this particular instance, the Board of Education's operating budget would increase by 1.95%, which represents $678,732. Town Government is proposing to increase by $178,999, which is 1.05%. Total increase is 1.49% and you could see that with the, if we were required to contribute to the State Teachers Retirement, that would bring that total expenditure number up to To give a little bit of perspective as it relates to expenditures over the last seven years, our average increase, including what's being recommended this evening, would have an average increase of 1.5% over seven years, 1.5% increase to the total budget over that seven-year period. So, what's being recommended this year is pretty much right in line with what, where we have, where we have been on an average basis over the last six years if we were required to, again, contribute to the State Teachers Retirement. That average increase would actually be closer to 2% over seven years, you know, so you can see the significant impact that that could have if it wasn't acted. On the revenue side, as proposed by Governor Malloy, intergovernmental revenues would increase slightly by about $50,000. Our grand list did, as a result of revaluation, increase slightly, 0.2%. That generates an additional $86,000 in revenue based upon the current mill rate. We see license and permits, prior taxes, taxes, interest, fines and fees are pretty much staying where they are right now. Sundry and transfers in is really how we accounted for some of the changes that were made to the state budget after the Town approved our budget. We approved our budget last year. You may recall that there were some reductions that were made and there were some mid-year reductions that were made. So, that accounting is that number of minus $263,000. So, you know, starting right out of the, right out of the gate, we're seeing that our revenues will be slightly down by about $75,000 overall, what we're projecting at this point in time. On the Town General Government expenditures, we have our various functions, general government, public safety, public works, health and human services, civic and cultural, fringe benefits, and what we, you know, what we call sundry or basically is transfers out to other items such as, you know, library and other, and other water pollution control and whatnot. So, what we're seeing is the general government, while it looks like it's a large percentage increase, some of that has to do with some of the changes that were made on the personnel side. So, we see the large decrease on the public works and you see a little bit of an increase in general government, just has to do with a shift of some personnel. But basically, public safety up 1%. Public Works actually down 3% but again, some of that is being shifted to general government. Health and Human Services being reduced. Civic and Cultural pretty much stay in the same. Employee benefits, the trend that we've been able to control to a certain degree and 3.85% is really not a bad increase concerning what it could be and what other towns have been experiencing, especially on the medical side. And our transfers out will reduce slightly, but that, that is what makes up our 1% proposed increase to the general government side of the budget. Our major drivers of the general government increase, payroll, all departments, in general, it's about a 2% increase in salaries. That represents with some of the changes that we've had in personnel at various levels, the estimate is that payroll will increase by $75,000. Employee benefits by $124,000. Liability insurance by almost $40,000. Utility costs, we're still projecting that we're going to have a decrease next year. We've had that trend over the last couple of years at the general government level, reduction of about $31,000. That's a total of 208,101. All the other items that are, that are in the budget would actually reduce the budget down to the $178,000, increase the difference of about $30,000. But those are the major, major increases and the one major decrease and there's slight decreases in a lot of other line items as we go through the budget and when we go through the budget, we'll explain how that, how that, how that filters out. With that in mind, those are the highlights of the general government budget and what I'd like to do is turn the microphone over to Dr. Brummett and have her go through her slides as they relate to the Board of Education budget. Almost gave you credit for a 1% increase.
I was willing to take, I was willing to take, still am willing to take that. Thank you for giving me this opportunity this evening. I would like to start off by thanking my Director of Finance and Operations, Sam Adlerstein, for his role in developing this budget, Mr. Steve LaPage for his role as well. And I also want to say that I worked very collaboratively with Mr. Buden and Mr. Lee in the development of this budget, so it's really a collaborative effort. I do want to also definitively state in front of the Town Council, members of the Board that are here, that I, you know, appalled at the Governor's proposed budget and have already made several attempts to voice my opinion about it as much as a superintendent can do. I went to the Capitol a few weeks back and testified about my opinion of the budget along with many colleagues as a member of CAPS. I invited our legislators to meet with us very recently to voice our opinion. We vociferously asked them to please remove the teachers' retirement burden this year, that with all the other things that have come down from the state and that $2 million burden of the teachers' retirement seemed a lot, a tremendous amount for any town to absorb. So, they've heard us, they know that it's an undue burden and hopefully, they will do what they have to do as legislators, but certainly, I'll do what I can as a superintendent to continue to voice my opposition to a budget that is harmful to most of the kids in the state of Connecticut, in my opinion. Just want to start on a more pleasant note. You might recognize some familiar faces in that picture. We did a strategic planning process this year and we're joined by many members of the Town Council, Chairwoman Pugliese, Assistant Chair Scott Saunders, Mr. Lee, Mr. Colby, and many of our Board, well, of our Board of Education members to develop what we feel is the direction that the district needs to take for the next five years. The reason I bring that up tonight is it's a budget driver for me. It's what, what I recommend tonight is directly linked to what my constituents have said are priorities for the district. You might recognize the circles. They haven't gone away even though there's a new superintendent in town. I've thought about that long and hard and I think that they still represent what is appropriate for our educational system. We're all about students' teaching and learning. We do have a new vision statement. We want to inspire and prepare lifelong learners to follow their passion, engage in their communities, and positively impact our global society. We're going to shorten that, have a catchphrase of inspire, prepare, and engage. That's what we want to do with our kids. So, I'll speak to the particulars of that vision statement throughout my presentation. We also developed core beliefs, or shall I say, decided to keep most of them because they all make very good sense to any school district in this state as to what we believe in, especially Plainville, that we are at the core of the community here and that we have a responsibility to develop productive and educated citizens so they're appropriately participating in a democratic society. We want our students to achieve optimally and share that responsibility with our school, home, and community. We want to provide each student with a comprehensive curriculum that's effective and ensures they're engaged in the learning process. We want to make sure they have a safe and caring environment that promotes their academic growth, health, and well-being. We want to communicate and collaborate to increase the knowledge, trust, and respect of our community. And finally, we did add the last one in a red box because we spent a lot of time this year on professional learning communities where our teachers meet on half-days on Wednesdays and that's been a very important time for us to really talk about what we need to do to make sure our students are doing well and how we can change our instruction as needed. So, that was an addition for this year. Our six-year budget history has been very, in my opinion, lean and reasonable. Those are averages and I want to direct your attention to this year that although we were approved for a 1.33 increase, what actually came to pass with those mid-year ECS cuts was a 1.04% increase. So, this year, we came into the school year thinking that we had a certain amount of money. I shouldn't say that. We came into the summer thinking we had a certain amount of money and were notified of several ECS cuts, both ECS cuts and transportation cuts, which were, in my opinion, unprecedented and occurred after we had already passed the budget as well as the Town had, you know, unanimously passed the budget or by a large majority. And we were forced to look back and work collaboratively with the Town and we agreed to set aside monies in this year's budget to make up for that lost ECS money and I'll explain that in another slide. So, here's our Board budget as it stands today. We feel we're on track to finish the year with a balanced budget. We will set aside and have set aside $100,000 as part of our gentleman's agreement with the Town to help make up for that lost ECS money. We also did use some realized savings last year to try to reduce some of our obligations this year. That helped to offset our technology expenses for this year. We also had additional, besides the ECS shortfall, we were notified in September of a $100,000 cut to open choice grant monies and I've had to address that this year as part of that set aside, but also in next year with some positions being eliminated. The negative balance, you'll see there, that rather large negative balance, will be offset by excess costs. We've got some preliminary figures in that look like we'll be very close to that number and we should be okay with our special ed tuitions. While many communities in the state of Connecticut are faced with a declining enrollment, Plainville is really quite stable and in fact, we're projecting to grow a little bit next year because we intend to expand our pre-K programs and we feel we'll capture just about all incoming kindergarteners next year. We're going to expand from a four-day-a-week program to a five-day-a-week program. So, with that expansion, we expect our enrollment to go slightly up where many of our neighbors are going slightly down. Just so the Town Council's aware, when we developed this budget, we didn't automatically assume that what was in last year's budget should continue to this year. With Sam's help, we went through the budget literally line by line, asked our administrators before they even presented their budgets this year that this would be a lean year and not a year to ask for any additional positions. We're not going to just budget what we did last year and assume that it'll all be okay. We knew, we didn't think it would be as bad as it turned out to be, but we knew that the state was going to be lean this year and that we had to plan accordingly. We looked at all of our activities and trends and forecasts and looked at areas where we could realize any savings whatsoever and, as I mentioned previously, worked collaboratively with our Town counterparts to put together what we feel is a very responsible budget. So, if we had done nothing at all as a, as a special, or as an educational body, we would have come out of the gate this year with a 3.11% increase simply by honoring our contractual obligations. Much like what the Town just discussed, our biggest drivers for the increase would be salaries, health insurance, transportation, busing. Those are what really drives our budget. This year, we, you know, had to, you know, we have to make up for or agree to what our contracts require, so that is a 2.33% overall in our salary line. We also were told through negotiations or conversations with our insurance broker that we should look to increase our insurance by 6% and we did move technology to the Capital Plan because we feel that's where it really does belong due to the cost of those items and, but they're still very important items for the, for the community. With some hard work and many deliberating hours with our Board of Education and Administration, we did bring our budget down from an initial 2.28 to 1.95. And again, it would have been 3.11 if we hadn't removed any positions, but right now, what the Board approved a few weeks ago is a 1.95% increase over last year's spending. How we did that is we, we did reduce some positions and I'll get to that in a moment to reduce our salaries and benefits obligations. We initially this year, well, just to back up a little bit, last year, our insurance line was actually a negative increase, so to meet our obligations as described by our brokers as well as in collaboration with the Town, we've really increased our insurance contribution this year by 400% from negative $70,000 to over $220,000 this year. Last year, we didn't budget at all for legal services. We used realized savings to pay for that last year. This year, we initially budgeted a larger amount, but decided after looking at the fact that we don't have any negotiations planned for this year, that we could reduce professional services slightly, so that increase is not as big as it would have been. We looked at what we had initially requested in repairs and property services, reduced that by another 1.29%. Transportation, we didn't touch because that's all contractual and we have to bus our kids to school. We looked at some lines that we could save under utilities, some equipment that we could put off, and that's how we got down to 1.95%. And again, as previously stated, the biggest drivers of this budget are the salaries and benefits for teachers and related services staff. Just so the Town's aware, this is how we were able to get to 1.95%. We reduced a PE teacher at the high school. Our former PE teacher became our athletic director and he was a long-term sub this year, replaced him, but next year, we are not going to have that position. We are reducing a current position at the College and Career Center and that will be, was a one-year position, so it will not continue. Just for impact purposes, when we reduce a PE teacher, we had to actually go in and change Board policy to reduce our PE credits. Now, we're still well with, actually slightly above the state mandate, but not as high as we were previously, so that is a change. And we also will have fewer options for kids as they get up into the upper grades and essentially, kids only have to take two years of PE now unless they choose to do as an elective as a junior or senior. The College and Career Elimination will simply eliminate support to that, which will now put a little more burden back on our school counselors and really, the College and Career Center is mostly going to focus now on career. We eliminated a tutor at the high school because of the choice grant cut. We're hoping that we can absorb those services and some other programs. And we have had an increase, not necessarily in the number of students with ESL needs, English as a second language, but in the different languages that we're getting into the, into the district. So, we do need to increase some ESL support and we did eliminate an office professional position that was unfilled most of this year, so we decided not to fill it at all. I've eliminated, the Board and I have eliminated, a social studies teacher at the middle school who has retired. We're not going to replace her. And the middle school also requires some additional English as a second language tutoring support. And at the elementary level, we did not make any staffing changes. This slide's a little bit hard to read, but what it shows you is in the second column from the left is all of our original requests under the Capital Budget. You can see they're, they're numerous and after conversations with the Board Facilities Committee as well as Mr. Lee, we dramatically eliminated most of those capital improvements with the exception of those that relate directly to safety, security, and technology. So, what you see in our budget right now is some equipment to keep our facilities clean, increasing or improving our district-wide security. We need to look at a doorway in the high school to the tech ed lab when there's cars being worked on, occasionally fumes kick back into the school and at least one time this year, it caused us to have to have the fire department come out. We do need to install some handicap accessible doors due to a student coming in next year. The kitchen floor was repaired this past summer, but the set aside money for that was not sufficient, so we have to budget for a little bit to make up for that. Our middle school fire annunciation system is on its last breaths and we definitely don't want to not have a building that's within those codes. And then from that point down, it shows you our technology needs for the coming year. I want to remind the Town Council that we use our own technology staff to support the Town and most recently, they were instrumental in helping when the police had a significant episode that impacted their technology. Our guys were there late into the wee hours of the morning to help that get rectified. So, we share that service. We are going to use or recommend that the capital monies be used to help with our server infrastructure. The Town will also be paying toward that in their line. We also want to extend Chromebooks to grade three, but also, most of that item there is for maintaining those that have kind of, are buying new Chromebooks for some of the schools that are now reaching the end of their life. Chromebooks are a much more economical way of providing technology to kids, but their, their lifespan is about four to five years. Some folks may say, "Well, why are you adding grade three in the middle of this budget crisis?" Grade three students have to take state tests and the state tests now are all technology-based. If we don't have the Chromebooks for that grade level, then the kids are taking way more time to get through that test. They're having to cycle through computer labs, which we have largely dismantled because with kids getting more of a one-to-one environment, we're not spending our money on computer labs anymore. So, it's very important that we have Chromebooks that reach down to the third grade level simply to keep up with the testing requirements. I did look at some data at the state recently and most school districts are using Chromebooks for their one-to-one programs and they are very cost-efficient and really, the work that the kids do is amazing, above and beyond state testing, but certainly, we've beholden to state testing. The rest of that budget would include some replacement cases for our middle schoolers. They are a little hard on the Chromebooks, so we've found some cases that are much more protective of the Chromebooks and will give them a longer lifespan. We also need to have some teacher laptop replacements at the middle school. They've already gone past their lifespan. They're on, they're on borrowed time. Some of our administrators are due for a laptop replacement and the PHS course, which just improves our infrastructure at the high school for connectivity. So, the next page doesn't really give you any additional information, but at the bottom of that page, which I cannot read, I believe it's 367,000. Can you tell me what it says, Scott?
387,000.
387,000. Thank you. That's our total requesting. That's our total requesting capital, which is down significantly from our original request, was, was more in the $900,000 range. So what have we done with this budget? What can we do with next year's programs, which are largely going to be achieved through reallocation? Because as you can see, there are no new positions in this budget. We are going to increase our preschools to five days a week. How we will be able to accomplish that is by charging parents a fee. The fee will still be extremely reasonable and much less than they might pay in a community preschool, but it'll allow us to expand with no additional board funds. We're going to revise our teacher evaluation plan to make it more flexible and less burdensome to teachers and administrators. I mentioned already about expanding our ESL programs. We're going to create a STEM lab at the middle school, but we're going to use that, fund that through some endowment monies that the district was left. We are going to develop at-risk programs at the middle school and at the high school for kids who are having a little difficulty in a more traditional academic setting. This will give them a different option to get through the school day, but that's all going to be done through reallocation, no additional staff. We're maintaining our after-school program, even though we lost that grant money this year. That's, that was another loss that we found out about in August. We have slightly raised our fees year after year and reduced the salaries that our teachers are getting through a different salary structure, and we also are offering less expensive outsourced services. It's all done by our in-district staff, and that has saved a lot of money. We're going to be doing a curriculum writing academy this summer. I already mentioned the Chromebooks. We want to continue to support our technology infrastructure. We also want to make sure we expand our culturally responsive teaching practices, so we're meeting the needs of all of our students. We're going to redesign our website and increase teacher and staff recognition, which is another low-cost or no-cost thing that does a lot for the school climate and culture. Just want to take a few minutes to tell you some of the wonderful things that have happened during 2016 in our school district. We were recently featured in a CAPS, the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, video as a school district that has used technology to transform instruction. We are expanding, we did expand our preschool this year to full day, and next year, it'll be full week, full day. We have had nice increases in both our Smarter Balanced and our SAT scores. Those are the state tests that are now being the cornerstone of how kids are measured, at least by the state standard. We have expanded our high school programs that will allow them to earn credit, college credit, while they're in high school. So kids are earning credit from UConn, Middlesex, Tungusis, and as of next year, CCSU. Last year, our kids left the school district with well over 700 college credits upon graduation, and in my estimation, that saved either them or their parents several hundred thousand dollars, upwards of $400,000 in tuition that they won't have to pay. We've increased our PLC program. It's called Professional Learning Communities, where our teachers have shortened days 12 times this year to share, reflect on innovative teaching practices, and make sure our students are learning. Our Veterans Program continues to get high accolades from our community and our VFW groups as a, as a nice way of honoring our veterans by having school that day. And we have a Model Elementary Wellness Program where our kids are getting breaks throughout the day to increase their concentration. Here's some pictures of our kids using technology. Some of these pictures are them taking a test or creating some presentations. There's our preschoolers, except for that one larger preschooler in the purple. Our robotics team continues to do very well. We've now brought that down to the middle school. We have a board member there observing a robotics adventure, but it's got, we've gotten a lot of support at the middle school now, so these kids are coming to the high school in really good shape to be competitive robotics students. There's a nice collage of our Veterans Day celebrations this year across all five schools. Many of you probably saw that beautiful flag flying at the middle school, which got a lot of attention, and it just, was just awe-inspiring. Some additional things we accomplished in 2016 is our middle school cross-country team was added, and it is a very successful endeavor. We now offer high school credit for Algebra I and several world languages at the middle school. We are continuing our engineering expansion, and our students are participating in Go Baby Go, both at the high school and the middle school, and that's where we refurbish little motorized cars that kids typically ride in, but these are now redesigned, so they're accessible for students with special needs. And if you ever have a chance to attend one of those ceremonies where the kids are actually riding in them, it's, it's an amazing, it's an amazing opportunity. We are expanding or starting to implement our student-led learning practices where kids are doing their own parent conferences. They're leading them, and I've observed it, and I can tell you, these kids are really aware of what they're learning, and that's exactly what will cause them to be even more engaged in their learning. We're working on both standards-based learning practices and student-led conferences, as I said in the previous bullet, where the kids now are going to know what exactly they, where they are in a standard, what they've learned and what they still need to learn versus strictly just an A, B, or C grade, kind of really understanding what they know. We created this year a co-op hockey team at the high school, and we're too small to have our own hockey team, but we've buddied up with Weathersfield and a few other communities, and we've actually had a pretty darn good year. And we developed our strategic plan, which will run from 2017 to 2022. There is our MSP track team, and that gentleman on the left was featured in USA Today because he was not supposed to walk at all. Now he's on our track team, and that got a lot of nice press for him and his family because of the way he conducts himself, as well as the other kids, who embraced him and supported him, even if he was a little slower than them, he was still an important member of the team. There's our Go Baby Go, where the kids are in a car, and you can see the modifications that our tech department makes so that these little guys who have some limitations can actually play in a car just like everybody else. Our Unified Sports Team continues to expand, and they are doing great. Couple of us did a penguin plunge recently in the Farmington, where did we go, Mr. LePage? Winding Trails on a 38-degree day, but we wanted to support our Unified Sports Team, and they're doing great. There's a co-op hockey team in action. They did a fundraiser that day, but again, they had a great first year. Collaboration, this is our teachers on our PLC days that I previously mentioned. I have them wear t-shirts to show the teamwork that we're trying to do, and this just shows how they collaborate and talk about a variety of topics relevant to improving students' teaching and learning. This year, under Mr. LePage's direction, we honored our teachers who had 25 or more years' experience. As you can see, that's a large group, and that actually includes more than just teachers. It includes non-certified staff, paraprofessionals, tutors, custodians. They, those folks were tickled to be honored in that way. And the gentleman in the middle with the blue shirt, Gary Felton, is on year 47 at our middle school, so he's the top longevity king. And he got a picture that he was tickled. And this is our new program called Everyday Hero, where we ask folks to nominate anyone they think who's gone above and beyond to make their school a better place. This happens to be Paula Schu, our Linden Street principal, getting one of the first awards, but since that time, we've had an office professional, several teachers, and the awards keep, the nominations keep coming in, and it's just a nice pat on the back for folks that go above and beyond. And that concludes my budget report for this evening.
Thank you.
Turn back over to Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Dr. Brummett. Last couple of categories in, in our budget is, next one is debt service. As of the end of this fiscal year, we will have an outstanding principal balance of a little bit over $23 million. Of that $23 million, about 3.2 goes towards town buildings and, and about $20 million left on the Board of Education's school improvements. As far as our, our debt payment for, as proposed fiscal year 18, at $4.7 million. That's the same amount that's been in place since fiscal year 15. Council has, has a, has a plan in place to hold that line item at a 0% increase to be able to fund future capital projects, and we had a meeting last evening where we were discussing the Wheeler, Wheeler Elementary School, High School paving project, and the middle school roof, and, but of that $4.7 million payment for next year, town government portion of it makes up about $1.3 million, Board of Education about $3 million, so miscellaneous costs for borrowings and whatnot of about $42,000. And the contribution, the difference going into the debt management fund is approximately As far as the capital improvement plan is concerned, what's being proposed and recommended is a $2.2 million expenditure amount. It's somewhat misleading because $1 million of that is for a project, the Northwest Drive paving project, which is being paid entirely through a grant that we received, a competitive grant through, through the Capital Region Council of Governments. That project will most likely, it's in the design phase right now, probably go out to bid sometime in early summer, hopefully gets, get paved, you know, perhaps before the end of the construction season, but we have to show it on the expenditure side in order, in order to move the project forward, but we also have, you know, grant funds that are completely offsetting that project, but that, it, it does what, it does somewhat exaggerate the overall proposed expenditures in the capital improvement plan. Also proposing to fund the $2.2 million, you'll see the, the grant for $1 million, the general fund contribution of $1.1 million, which is the exact same amount that we've contributing in the current fiscal year, and I'm also proposing to make up the difference by using unassigned fund balance of $105,000. Again, you saw earlier that the Board of Education's amount was, was $387,000. The town's amount is really $818,000 when you take into account the $1 million that's going towards Northwest Drive, so it gives you an idea of, of the differences in, or the allocation between the town government and the Board of Education. Some of the items being considered. On the general government side, again, in the Northwest Driving Paving Project, some of the other larger projects is, we have the Police Dispatch Communications, we have the fourth or fifth payments, or five payments. The council decided four years ago to, to fund this over a five-year period. We're proposing to purchase a, a backhoe loader in the roadways department for $115,000. We're proposing to replace three of our police cruisers for a total of $114,000, and we have our rescue apparatus, our fifth year payment. Again, the council decided to pay for that over five years, so this would be our fifth, our last payment for that particular, that particular line item. Makes up about $1.5 million of the two-point, well, of the 1.8, that's, that's the town side. We have 18 other smaller projects averaging about $18,000 apiece, and, and, and those recommendations are detailed in your, you know, in your, in your booklets. On the Board of Education side, you, there was an explanation given earlier, so I won't repeat what was, what was said earlier, but that's pretty much, you know, it's, it's basically 12 proj, 12, 12 projects, 12 items. The larger ones are listed on the sheet, and the eight smaller projects average about, you know, $12,000, $13,000 average for those, for the smaller requests. Again, if we take into account the, the, the teacher's retirement, the, the budget would be $60 million. It represents an increase of, of a $2.7 million, of 4.83%. If adopted as, as, with that inclusion into it, the, the increase would be 2.13 mils or a tax increase of 6.65%. Again, the next slide will show that the mil rate calculation, expenditure increases, revenue decreases, the value of a mil at 97.4%. That's how we get to 2.13 mils. However, you know, taking out the, the teacher's retirement for the time being, because we don't know where that's going to go, and, and, and as Dr. Brummett spoke earlier about meeting with our local legislators, our state senate, state, state senator and state representative, they both indicated that they don't believe that that's a, you know, that to put that burden on top of the towns in, in this particular environment makes a lot of sense. How much influence, you know, that goes up into Hartford, I'm hearing the same, you know, from both sides of the aisle, as far as their, you know, legislators expressing some skepticism about, about whether that's the best approach to take with, with regards to the state budget, but, you know, whether that becomes a moving target, that remains to be seen. And I think for, at least for the review of this budget over the next month, we should, we should put that to the side, perhaps make contingency plans as we get closer to, to making a decision, especially as it relates to the mil rate, but for, for, for the time being, the recommendation is that, that based upon the, without the teacher's retirement, the mil rate calculation would be an increase of 0.69%, 0.69 mils, excuse me, 0.69 mils, or a little bit over a 2% increase in, in taxes. This gives you an idea of the mil rate history since our last revaluation. That 2.17 fits pretty much right in line with, with what we've seen, you know, over the last, you know, four years, and then you see what the significant impact it would have of the teacher's retirement if in fact it was pushed down on top of the, on top of the individual municipalities. Our average increase of our mil rate over the last five years, which would include even what's being proposed this evening, would be, would be an average increase of a little bit over 1% increase in taxes, which I think is a fairly modest increase in, in taxes over that, over that stretch of time. Certainly would be greatly exaggerated if, if we were required to make the teacher's pension contribution. You know, in conclusion, I'm recommending that the town council consider a budget totaling $58,500,194, which is a 1.49% increase in expenditures. If approved, this will result in an estimated tax increase of 0.69 mils or a 2.17 average tax increase. But because this is a revaluation year of property owners, we'll see a different tax increase based upon whether their assessments increased or decreased. Town staff has put together a booklet, a spreadsheet, showing the potential impact to each of the property owners in Plainville. This analysis does show that there is a significant number of residents who will see a decrease in taxes as a result of the proposed budget, while others will see an increase, and some of the increases are significant as well. This analysis will be posted on the town's website for everyone to see, and I certainly have it available for anybody who took the time to come out this evening and would like to see what the potential impact would be to their, to their particular parcel. It's, it's hard to say that, you know, that it'll be even, you know, in a normal year without revaluation, a percentage increase, everybody could just take their own taxes from last year and multiply it by the, the percent increase. This year, it's, it's, it's a lot different, and that's why, at least in my opinion, it's, it's necessary for everyone to maybe take a look at the book and see how it might impact them. Again, we'll put copies of that eventually in the library as well. We will have a copy available in the assessor's office as well, and we will post it online so people can look up individual properties, their individual properties, perhaps their neighbor's individual properties, or anyone else in town that they want to look up and, and see what the potential impact is, based upon the recommended budget, and even what the potential increase would be if the teacher's retirement was pushed down into town too, so people can see individually how that would impact them as well. So I do want to thank my staff as well. Rob Budin, Stacy Boajin, Scott Colby, Cal as well, put some things together, and Shirley was helping from a little bit of a distance, but helping as well, and, and certainly the Board of Education administrative staff. Again, we do work very closely together in an effort to, to continue to, at least in my opinion, produce budgets that are, that, that I think are, have been acceptable to the taxpayers over the last several years, and, and I hope are in line with what the town council is looking for in terms of maintaining our existing services, and in some instances, making them a little bit better, an improvement, and while at the same time, you know, perhaps getting rid of some things or substituting some things and, and saying that it's, you know, that we can reduce in some other areas as well. We continue to make progress in our infrastructure. You know, I'm proud of the improvements that we're making in our parks, based upon some of the grants that we've been able to, to be successful in. We continue to be able to get grants in the area of some paving, some road improvements, including Cook Street and Northwest Drive, while at the same time, doing our, our road bond project as well. So overall, I think we're in, we're in very good shape as far as our, our financial picture is concerned. Really, the uncertainty is what's going to happen at the state level, and I think we just need to be patient and monitor that as we go forward. So with that in mind, again, we have a, by charter, we're required to have a, a public hearing on the town manager's recommended budget, which will be next Thursday, 7:00 PM right here in this room, and I hope we get, you know, people and at least give us some reaction to what's some reaction to what's being proposed and recommended this evening. With that, I'd like to conclude the presentation. If there's any questions at this time, I'm sure we, you know, any questions that we can help clarify, we could do that, but for you, but otherwise, I think we're all set.
Anybody in the council have any questions for the town manager or superintendent? Not to leave you out, of course.
No.
At this time? Nope. Okay, we're all set. Okay, thank you, Robert, and Superintendent Brummett, thank you. Having said that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor? All right. Thank you very much for coming out tonight.